It is 4:02 on August 22, 2023, and we are calling this board meeting to order at 4:02. Rosie, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Wagen? Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Bartow? Dr. Smith?
Here.
Great. And next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen? Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
And do we have any closed session items? No? Okay. We will now transition to closed session. The items are for A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation; for B, conference with labor negotiator; for C, public employee discipline dismissal, release, and employment; for D, public employee discipline dismissal, release, employment, number 202307HR; for E, conference with real property negotiator. And we will return to open session at 6:00 PM. We are starting the meeting. It is 6:02, and we have one readout from closed session. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resignation agreement and general release number 202307HR. The roll call vote was as follows. Ashley Anderson, yes. Michelle Bartow, yes. Carol Crane, yes. Leah Ursoilu, yes. Michelle Murphy, yes. Leah Pearson, yes. Krista Wagen, yes. 7-0. Next, we will have our moment of reflection and our pledge of allegiance, led by trustee Bartow. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the adoption of the minutes from July 25, 23, 2023. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have introduction of new staff. Dr. Sir.
Yes, so, good evening, President Anderson, board members, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and esteemed guests. It is my honor to introduce the new principal for Mariners Elementary School. Her name is Antoinette Ko, and she comes to us with 25 years of experience in education. She has held various positions, including as a teacher, an instructional specialist, an assistant principal, and a principal. She has a strong background in PBIS, thinking maps, PLCs, and GATE programs. She has an extensive and varied background in curriculum and instruction encompassing best instructional strategies and comprehensive support for all learners. Her years in education have only reinforced her belief that increasing student engagement produces lifelong learners with the critical thinking skills and confidence necessary for future success. She is dedicated to creating a safe and emotionally secure school environment for all students to succeed and is committed to fostering collaboration among staff and the community to establish a stable and positive learning environment for everyone. So with no further ado, I would like to introduce Principal Antoinette Ko.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Member President Anderson and all of our board members, as well as our Superintendent Dr. Smith, members of the Cabinet, and also members of our community. I would like to thank you all for this opportunity to serve as Mariners Principal and with the Mariners community and be a part of Newport Mesa Unified School District. I believe that education can be a very powerful tool, and it can enrich the lives of our children as well as producing those lifelong learners, which I consider myself still a lifelong learner. There's always something to learn, endless opportunities. So with that, you know, I just want to really embrace that with our students because education is really about engaging our students. It's about that learning. It's about being able to do that inquiry process, problem solving, and collaboration. So these are things that I really value and like to instill in our community, our students, as well as our teachers, teaching staff. So very excited, looking forward to building relationships, to continue to establish and create opportunities for all of our students, as well as learning from everyone in our community, as well as our board members, and our leadership team that we have within Newport Mesa. So lots of people that I know that I can work with and count on, and I'm looking very forward to that. I do want to introduce someone very special, a couple of people. I mean, one of them is super special. As you can hear him back there. He's actually my husband. My husband, Eric, back there with our grandson. That's our 18-month-old grandson. He is the best. So I always tell parents, your teenagers will be okay, and they will give you a wonderful gift one day. I said, help them through it, they get there. So he's our joy. And then we're having another grandbaby in March. And I have three children. They couldn't be here tonight. Two of them live in Oregon, and one of them is local, but she had another event tonight. That's why we have him too. And she's a teacher too. So she's following in my footsteps, first-year teaching, super excited. But I do want to just take one more opportunity just to thank everyone, from our board to our superintendent, as well as our leadership team, my colleagues. This transition has been seamless and truly a joy. So I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I'm grateful that you trust in me to give me this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, President Anderson, Board, Superintendent Smith, my esteemed colleagues and our guests. It is my distinct pleasure to welcome the new administrative director for special education, Dr. Elsie Bruseno Simonowski, and welcome her up to the podium here. And as she's making her way up, let me tell you just a few things about her background. She has a very strong background as an elementary teacher, a literacy coach, a middle school administrator, and a high school principal. And all of those come with experience in both the general ed and the special education side. And then most recently, she served as the Director of Student and Community Services for the Buena Park School District. So she has a heart as well for some of our underserved and marginalized populations. So she'll fit in really well in special education. So Dr. Simonowski understands the importance of the interdependence between general education and special education to support all students. And she has the experience and expertise in working with students, school sites, and families to support each student's educational needs. She started in the district in July, jumped right in with our special education extended school year program, welcomed staff, students, and families, got to problem solve from day one on the job. And we're very excited and we're very happy that she's here, so please join me in welcoming Dr. Simonowski.
Good evening, Board President Anderson, Vice President Crane, members of the governing board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, executive cabinet, and guests joining us this evening. My name is Elsie Bruseno Simonowski, and I am very excited to serve this great organization in Newport Mesa as the proud Director of Special Education. I am thrilled and looking forward to supporting the vision of our district under the leadership of Dr. Jocum as I joined and make my onboarding a little over 30 days ago. So in my brief time within the department, I have witnessed so many great services and programs that are directly supported by a number of incredible staff, both certificated and classified. And I have to say that they are a very hard-working group that I'm honored to be working alongside. Our team, as I quickly observed, are dedicated and committed to supporting all of our students with disabilities. I thank you for your trust and look forward to supporting the goals within our organization and ensuring the continual success and achievement of our special education department and serving our students with disabilities. And the staff that serves is a very special group that I'm passionate about and has a very special place in my heart. This evening, I am joined by my husband and family. My daughters Ariana and Natalia, so you can stand up for a quick second, please. My family is not only my North Star, but also a continual reminder of why we do what we do in education, to remain student-centered, supporting our schools and the community in which we serve, enhancing opportunities and elevating our kids' success to ensure every child is provided the opportunity to succeed. So I look forward to the journey with our district, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, and welcome to both of you. Next, we have our CSCA and NMFT president comments. President Stu Tedford?
President Anderson, board members, my good buddy Wes Smith, Cabinet, and esteemed guests. The next statement I'm going to give is probably only makes the maintenance guys excited, and I'm really glad this summer is over. That is when we really get in and we do what needs to be done to get the schools ready for when the kids come back. And evidently, we did a pretty fair job because I get a lot of reports back, most of them negative, and I have not had one thing except positive comments about the kids being ready to learn. The first day they come in, there is no adjustment period. They literally went right at it, and it was really exciting to hear that. And then we got to have a little celebration to end our summer in maintenance and operations with the back-to-school luncheon, which was one of the best that I've been to in quite a few years. It was really a kumbaya event where everybody just let it go and just sat and had burgers and talked to each other, not as even board members in locksmiths, but just as folks who are, you know, busy educating kids and supporting education. So it was a wonderful event. I'm really happy that we're into another school year, and I want you all to know and rest assured that the Maintenance and Operations Department, transportation, food service, everybody that we work together with is ready to serve the kids and this district. So thank you very much.
Next, we have NMFT President Rhonda Reed.
I can't see my paper without my glasses, and I can barely see you with my glasses. It's terrible. Good evening, President Anderson, board members, Superintendent Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and guests here tonight. Well, what a way to start the 2023-2024 school year, the day after a historic tropical storm, a once-in-every-century storm. People were scared, they prepared. I filled sandbags with some of the people in our district here. They waited, and they worried. Yet, our teachers and other certificated staff professionals showed up early and showed up ready, ready to greet their new students to a new school year, and their passion and commitment to our students is extraordinary. Some had rain damage and leaks, but their positive attitude and professionalism was noted and appreciated by all. Many members commented how MNO saved the day by quickly rushing in, taking care of situations that were related to the storm. I understand that they worked over the weekend, through the night, and so just a huge thank you to MNO. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of our staff, our teachers, and our certified, or classified staff as well. I think it's one of the things that I heard from one of our trustees were there were private schools that were closed and we were open, which is a lovely change. So I just want to thank all of the people who make Newport Mesa incredible, and I think our families really felt cared for and really valued being open on Monday. So thank you so much for all of your work in making that happen. Next, we have community input on non-agendized items. Trustee Wagen?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on their regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, Section 54954.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
First, we have Cynthia Blackwell.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Smith and Cabinet. I just wanted to come today and say a huge thank you because this is the first time in years, both while I was working as a teacher for Newport Mesa and since I've been retired, that everybody's like, wow, we had such a great first day of school. And it's because of you guys sitting up here on the dais. You have just done such a remarkable job of guiding this district and working together as a team and having a fabulous superintendent. And I just want to come and say thank you because I don't think people realize all the hours of work that go into everything that you do. I know secondhand because my dad was a board member here. Many nights, he was up till 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning before he went to his teaching job when he was on the board. So I know all the hours, all the time, and all the dedication you have to make this district the outstanding district that it is. And I'd also like to thank you very much too for having finally put the NMFT and the CSCA on the agenda to give comments. So I just want to say a big thank you for all the job that you're all doing.
And next, we have Angelie Andrade Vayarda.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, and all the staff. I'm a parent of a second grader at College Park Elementary, but I wanted to first start off my comments in the proper timeline, so dating back to summer. I really just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you for a fabulous summer program. My daughter got to participate at Sonora Elementary. First off, I'll say the fact that you provided the programming, 7:30 AM to 4:00 PM, was a blessing. As a working parent, it is such a huge help because on the city end, it is very limiting and quite pricey if you want to have your kid full-time care for your kid while you're working. It's quite pricey. It's about $300 a week, and private fees are even, you know, not affordable for the majority of our school district parents. So huge, huge appreciation for making that available, and not just making that available for providing the parents just the safety and assurance that our kids are going somewhere safe. But my daughter walked away so, so excited every day. We were having, at pickup, we were having conversations about the Great Barrier Reef and how the corals are whitening and that octopuses have two hearts. I mean, it was absolutely beautiful and conversations that I have had myself with her. And I know that as parents, we do our best to try to educate our kids, but the reality is, they like your teachers so much better. She don't want to leave. She'll read more. She is more engaged. And the physical activities, so you guys definitely provided not only the education and the enrichment, the STEM exposure, the physical activities. So thank you, thank you, thank you. If there's any way in the Lord's name that it can be greater than just the month of July, that would be fantastic. But, you know, I will take my wins where I can. And then secondly, my time is running, so I just really want to say thank you also. I just echo the previous person's comments. It was just a fabulous kickoff to the school year. She is so excited to go into her second year of Mandarin. Thank you so much for hiring such a fantastic principal, Alice Formanek. She makes herself visible, is engaged with our students already. We're seeing it firsthand as a PTA parent. And also, it's already week one, but I already have, I got my timeline ready to go because I'm ready to sign up for the enrichment program that you're providing next week. So thank you so much for that because again, this is a Title I, my daughter's attending a Title I schools, and these are the schools that really do need that added enrichment, that exposure to STEM and physical activities and art and theater and dance. So thank you, thank you so much for making this affordable to families here in Orange County, especially for parents that are in Title I schools on the west side of Costa Mesa. Thank you, thank you, thank you for investing in the future of our children, of our future workforce. I appreciate you so, so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this time tonight. I wanted to also echo a little bit of that. I live across the street from Adams Elementary, and prior to school starting, I think on Friday, I had a meeting with the new principal, Mr. Irvin, and he was wonderful. Living across the street from a school can be challenging because parents don't always park where they're supposed to park and think your driveway is their drop-off spot. But I have to say that in the last 10 years, these first two days have been the best that they have ever been. He is on it, so thank you for that. Also, in echoing, I want to thank you for your strength, encourage in having school on Monday and not canceling school like so many other schools did for what was really a little rain compared to what we had in the winter. And on that note, with being strong and thanking you for being strong, I would just like to ask you to be courageous in the coming days when it looks like mandates might be trying to come back. And I think everyone knows that masks were not great for kids, so I just want to implore you to really try. I know Hollywood studios are masking up and testing again, and I know you don't have it easy in your decision-making, but I implore you to please be strong and not put those things on little kids' faces. It's not helped them. They're still struggling and trying to heal from what's been happening in the past. So that's my request. Thank you so much.
Next is Bryce Kraus.
I'm Bryce Kraus. I'm a husband, a father to three sons, a business owner in Newport Beach, and I'm here to notify us, our community, Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, that our elected officials are failing us. They're failing our children. We do not want the agenda you guys are pushing on our kids in our schools. We want parental rights. Right? We're having a hard enough time teaching the basics, mathematics, reading, writing. Where do we stand, Superintendent? 44th in the nation? Join me, Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, Rising Suns, Town Hall, September 15, 6:00 PM. Come meet hard-charging parental advocates. Come meet local persons running for Congress. That would be our representation. And join me. Join me in this fight. Let's clean up our schools.
Hello, Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, and members of the board. As a parent and taxpayer helping to fund this district, I'm here to ask you to explain your district priority that states engage in meaningful constituent conversations. Two weeks ago, I saw a flyer for an event at my local Costa Mesa Library hosted by Costa Mesa Democrats titled "Defending Our School Boards: A Conversation on Education." It was a Q&amp;A with President Anderson, trustee Ursoilu, my trustee, and trustee Murphy. Finally, I thought a chance to hear them speak off the dais and see what their thoughts are on issues in my district, and I can even ask them questions, especially since my trustee is soon up for reelection. But my gosh, I was mistaken. About 20 minutes in, I realized that this wasn't you three discussing education, but instead, you were there with slides talking about right-wing extremist mothers. Is that really appropriate to be at for nonpartisan school board trustees who are inclusive and supposed to represent all families? Or do you only represent the families that agree with you? Because you guys don't do Q&amp;As at any other type of events. I shouldn't have to pay money or be a part of a certain party to engage with you. Now shortly after, while sitting quietly listening, a man interrupted to shout my name while everybody flipped open their cameras and said if I didn't leave, then they would have me removed. Trustee Murphy, seemingly drunk on power among friends, stood by the door waving, just like that, bye-bye, bye-bye, and dancing around saying, are you going to tag me in your post? How embarrassing for you. Is this really the look you want to have as a representative of your city and 18,000 children in this district? Is this how you engage meaningfully with constituents? President Anderson, in response to an email from Newport Mesa Uncensored, you wrote, "The values of kindness and compassion of an inclusive and caring district environment are top priorities for our board and led to the election of each current member of this board." You definitely fooled me on that one. I don't think it's a coincidence that the same three ladies that were at a local event discussing right-wing extremist mothers are the same three that made up the policy editing team to amend a parental rights policy and vote a much stronger version down. I encourage you three to take a step back and think about who you represent and how, as district leaders, you treat your constituents, even those with differing opinions. Or else your be kind, and your inclusive, and your compassion, your language means nothing, and your behavior just showed that. So thank you.
Joni Nichols?
I don't really know the formalities to address all of you, so I'll just say thank you for what you do. I'm here tonight because of a meeting I attended last night at the Newport Beach Public Library. And at that meeting, I heard lots of discourse about perhaps limiting the books that are available to our students, and that concerns me. It enrages me, but I'm saying it with a smile because I want to turn to those parents who perhaps want to curtail which books are available to us and say, oh, my heart goes out to you. I'm so sorry. If you want to limit your children's exposure to divorce, or war, or political insurrection, or...
Excuse me, you do not interrupt someone else's public comment, or you may leave.
Or subjects, reproductive, anything. I understand that's concerning to you, so don't check those books out. Or maybe check them out. Have the courage to live with that discomfort, and then it will open conversations. And I'm just going to conclude with a little personal story, and I'm shaming myself. I went to university, and I heard that there were these intern camps for Japanese. And I went, we didn't do that? Well, we did. And I didn't know that until the university level. And then I had a professor visiting from Guatemala, and he said, do you know Americans undermine democracy in my country? And naive little Joni Nichols said, we didn't do that. And then I moved to Guatemala, and I learned we did. And so I don't want our children to be ignorant like I was. If you'd like to hear or read a book educated by Tara Westaway, talks about what it is to have your parents curtail your exposure to what's really going on in the world. Amen. She came back, she got educated, and she now can inform her own family who lived with very limited idea of what was in the world. I've been fortunate. I've lived in four other countries besides the United States. And one of the ways my husband got me to come to Newport Beach, where we own a home, was to say, you'll have access to public libraries. I've lived in countries where there was no public library in a language I could read easily. And we got here, and I got to the Newport Beach Library, and then I discovered I could go to my local schools and borrow books. And I am here to say that needs to continue. schools and borrow books. And I am here to say that needs to continue. Thank you very much.
Buenas tardes a todo el superintendente, miembros de la mesa. Voy a leer una carta. Mi nombre es Martín Garay y mi esposa Cristina Raso. El año pasado tuvimos a nuestro hijo Ángel Garay Raso en Tijwinko, y este año tenemos a nuestro hijo David en séptimo grado. Estamos aquí porque desde el año pasado hemos luchado porque el distrito nos haga caso y hagan un cambio y trasladen a la consejera Milke para empezar los dos años que mi hijo Ángel estuvo en Tijwinko. Nunca conocimos a la consejera Milke. Ella nunca hizo el intento por comunicarse o de reunirse con nosotros, y mi hijo recibe apoyo por parte de Educación Especial. Es increíble, y no entiendo cómo puede un estudiante cruzar dos años en una escuela y los padres no conocer a la consejera. Venimos enterándonos sobre de la consejera cuando la señorita Caro y la veíamos en las juntas de padres. En las clases de los padres que ofreció, pero la consejera Milke nunca la vimos en ningún evento. Siempre tuvimos contacto con la señora Diana. Incluso pensábamos que ella era la consejera, porque siempre nos ayudó y ha estado disponible. Cuando nos enteramos del nombre de la consejera, pedimos el cambio, porque obviamente queríamos alguien disponible que nos apoyara. Incluso queríamos programar una junta con la consejera y después de la escuela... Perdón, y después de la escuela con la señora. Diana nos informó que la señora Milke nunca tuvo juntas después de la escuela. Esto es algo que nunca he escuchado en ninguna escuela. ¿Cómo es posible que la consejera no nos pueda atender a todos los padres cuando nosotros trabajamos y no podemos asistir a las juntas en la mañana? Pero el problema va más allá porque la consejera le dijo a mi hijo que solo estaba disponible por internet, por medio de correos electrónicos. ¿Cómo es posible que una persona... Personalmente, obviamente, esta consejera no sirve? No está haciendo su trabajo. Y ahora que mi hijo David acaba de entrar, yo no quiero que pase por lo mismo y tenga una consejera que no le ayude y no nos apoye a nosotros como padres. Nosotros siempre hemos estado involucrados en dilac. Siempre hemos apoyado al distrito. Porque nos interesa la educación de nuestros hijos. Por eso exigimos el cambio. Lo justo es que todos los estudiantes tengan una consejera que vea y que los apoye. En este disponible para nosotros, para los padres. Por favor, hagan el cambio. Queremos una consejera que esté verdaderamente interesada en el bienestar de los estudiantes. Gracias.
Thank you, Martine.
Dear Superintendent, members of the Board of Education, my name is Martín Garay, and this is my wife Cristina. Last year, we had our son, Ángel Garay Raso, at Tijwinko, and this year, we have our other son, David, in seventh grade. We are here because since last year, we've been fighting and trying to talk to the district to make a change and transfer the counselor, or counselor Milky or Milk. To start the two years with Angel, my son, he was at Tijwinko. We never met the counselor. She never tried to communicate or meet with any of us. And my son does receive special education services. It's incredible to see that, and I don't understand how a student can go through two years at a school and parents don't know the counselor. We found out about the counselor through Ms. Carol. We would see her at parent meetings and classes that were offered, but we would never see the counselor. We never saw her at a single event. We always had contact or communication with Mrs. Diana, and we actually thought she was the counselor because she would always help us and was always available. When we found out the name of this counselor, we asked for that change, that transfer. We obviously wanted someone who was available, someone who would support us, and we wanted to program or schedule a meeting with the counselor after school. And Mrs. Diana informed us that Mrs. Milk did not have meetings after school, and this is something that we had heard and something that had not seen or was not seen at other schools. How is it possible that the counselor cannot provide that service, cannot meet with us when we work? We can't go out. We can't go to these meetings.
Javier, we're at six minutes. Can you hand that to us so we can have a copy of it, please?
Okay, but it's in Spanish.
That's okay.
Vamos a entregar una copia a la Junta de Educación, y yo la voy a traducir para ellos, ¿ok?
Thank you.
Les voy a dar la copia, y os entregué una copia.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, Mr. Smith, yes, Martine.
Buenas tardes, Superintendent, Mesa Directiva. Mi nombre es Rosa Herrera, y estoy aquí porque hace unos años tuve a mi hijo Ramundo Herrera en Tijwinko, que ahora está en Estancia. Y la verdad que nunca conocimos a su consejera, Mike, Michael. Es una larga historia. No me quiero demorar demasiado. Esto es... Estuve siempre en contacto con la señorita, señora Diana. Yo siempre pensé que ella era la consejera, entonces siempre, siempre, siempre yo pensaba con ella, con ella, con ella todo el tiempo, más nunca supe, nunca recibí ninguna llamada de la consejera. Lo lamento. Esto apenas vine a enterar hace un año, porque, bueno, más bien de un año atrás, porque ahora mi hijo está en Estancia, en el grado, pasó al grado 12, y ahí supe que es una consejera, porque cada trimestre, cada semestre, una consejera se reúne con su estudiante. Y lamentablemente, en Tijwinko nunca le pasó reunirse con su consejera. Entonces, yo venía investigando con Diana hace un año. Quería saber quién era su consejera de Ramondo en esos años anteriores, y vine a enterarme que justamente es la misma consejera que le tocó a mi hijo en Tijwinko hace un año. Dije, "¿Cómo es posible que esta señora siga ahí, sin hacer nada, si los estudiantes necesitan mucha ayuda?" Incluso, mi niño tenía, necesitaba ayuda hace un año con su behavior. Y dije, "¿Qué está pasando?" Yo le llamaba, nunca contestaba. Entonces, pregunté a Diana y le dije, "Oye, ¿qué está pasando? Porque, ¿quién es la consejera? Quiero saber." Y dice, "No, pues es esta persona." Entonces dije, "Oh, sí, claro."
Superintendent, members of the board, my name is Rosa Herrera. And yes, for years, I've had children at Tijwinko. I had Raymond Herrera at Tijwinko. He's now at Estancia. I never knew who his counselor was. I had to ask, and it is a long story, but I was always in communication with Mrs. Diana, the school communicator facilitator there at the school. I thought she was a counselor, so I asked her, you know, who is a counselor? We never received any calls, any communications from the actual counselor. So, about a year ago, I found out because I went to a meeting that was held for my son at Estancia, where the counselor basically had a meeting with many parents. That's how I found out that counselors are supposed to do that. So, this is done once a month. And then I went back to Mrs. Diana and I asked, you know, who was a counselor at that time when my son was there, and it was the same counselor. So, I'm wondering, how is this possible? How is she still there? At that time, my son needed a lot of help, especially with his behavior. So, you know, I would call Mrs. Diana, and she's the one that would provide that help, and she would tell me that was her counselor.
Entonces, este, pedí mucha ayuda. Dije, "Yo tengo que buscar ayuda," y le dije a Diana, "Necesito ayuda, necesito ayuda. Quiero saber cómo comunicarme con la consejera." Y me dijo, "Pues es esta persona. Agarre su nombre, créame su teléfono," y nada, no me contestaba. Entonces, yo pedí el cambio, pero dijeron, "No, sigue siendo ella. Tiene que esperarse." Entonces, yo hice el cambio con la señora Carolina, que es una consejera, como no se imagina. Me ha ayudado muchísimo. Y, por favor, solo les pido que pongan a una consejera que en realidad nos ayude en la escuela Tijwinko. Lo necesitamos mucho, porque esa persona, la verdad, nunca la conocimos. Bueno, de mi parte nunca la conocí, no sé quién es, y nunca se ha reunido con nosotros en ninguna junta que hemos tenido, lamentablemente. Y no la queremos de regreso. Por favor. Gracias.
So, I do request help from you all. I talked to Diana. I asked for help. You know, we wanted to know how to contact this counselor. Yes, she shared her phone number, but I would call. She would never answer. They would tell me to just wait and wait. So, I requested that change, and after a little bit of pushback, I did receive that change to Counselor Carolina or Carol. She is great. She's wonderful. So, I ask that you help us with this. Don't bring this counselor back. We need help at our school, at Tijwinko. We never, or I have never met her, so I don't know who she is. Again, we need the help at Tijwinko, so please help us with this.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Buenas tardes, Superintendent, y miembros de la Mesa Directiva. Padres de familia e invitados que esta bonita tarde nos acompañan. Mi nombre es Sitlali Ponce, y llevo ocho años como voluntaria en las escuelas de Newport Mesa. Soy la mamá de Zuleika Ortega, del octavo grado de la escuela Tijwinko. Estoy aquí porque estoy muy molesta al saber que la consejera Milky regresará a nuestra escuela Tijwinko. Mi hija, Zuleika, sufre de ansiedad y estrés, y el año pasado, la consejera, en lugar de ayudarla, platicar con ella, fue muy despreciativa e ignoraba sus síntomas, diciendo que sus frecuentes dolores de estómago eran dados a la comida. Sin embargo, la consejera solo hablaba con ella cinco minutos, y era todo. De acuerdo a mi hija, ella no se sintió cómoda con la consejera, y apresuradamente habló con ella, mostrando su falta de interés. En ese tiempo, mi hija incluso tenía ideas de suicidarse, y su consejera, la señora Milky, nunca la ayudó cuando más la necesitaba. Nosotros, los padres, ya nos hemos reunido con la coordinadora de la escuela y directora. Hemos mandado cartas al distrito y no hemos recibido respuesta. Necesitamos respuestas y soluciones a este problema. Ella incluso no nos apoya a nosotros, los padres. No la vemos, no la vemos involucrada con nosotros mismos, con nuestros alumnos en eventos escolares. La verdad, no sabemos por qué sigue en la escuela, si no nos apoya la comunidad, o a lo mejor no tiene interés porque somos comunidad latina. Gracias a Dios, pude pedir un cambio de consejera, y desde enero del año pasado, la señora Caro ha sido la consejera de mi hija, y he visto la gran diferencia. Ella sí se preocupa por los estudiantes, y me hablaba cada vez que mi hija tenía ansiedad, y platicaba con ella, y la tranquilizaba. Sin embargo, estoy aquí porque no quiero que otros estudiantes pasen por esta mala experiencia de tener una mala consejera como la señora Milky. No es justo que parte de los estudiantes de Tijwinko tengan a una consejera que simplemente no le importa el bienestar de sus estudiantes. No quisiera ver que algún estudiante se lastimara por la falta de compasión e interés de esta consejera. Le pido al Superintendent y a los miembros de la Mesa Directiva que, por favor, resuelvan este problema. La transfieran o la destituyan de su cargo. No es fácil, y ella no es eficaz, y simplemente no tiene el deseo de ayudarnos y apoyar a sus estudiantes. Por favor, les suplicamos que saquen a la señora Milky de nuestra escuela y nos traigan a una consejera que tenga el interés de ayudar a nuestros hijos.
Good afternoon, Superintendent and members of the board. My name is Sitlali Ponce, and I've been a volunteer for eight years here at the schools in Newport Mesa. I am the mother of Zuleika Ortega. She's in eighth grade at Tijwinko. I am here because I'm very upset when I found out with what's going on with Counselor Milky. I found out that she's going back to, or coming back to Tijwinko. My daughter, Zuleika, suffers from anxiety, stress, and this happened last year. The counselor, instead of helping her, you know, talking to her, she would ignore her. She would ignore her symptoms, saying that those frequent stomach aches were maybe because of the food. But the counselor only spoke to her about five minutes, and according to my daughter, she never felt comfortable speaking with a counselor, and rapidly spoke to her, demonstrating that she wasn't really interested in what my daughter was saying. At that time, my daughter also had, you know, ideas of suicide, and her counselor, Mrs. Milky, never helped with what was needed. We, as parents, have come together, have met with the coordinator of the school, the principal, and we've sent letters to the district, and we haven't heard anything back. We need answers. We need solutions to this great problem. She did not support us as parents. We don't see her as being involved with parents or in events at school. We truly don't know why she continues at the school if she does not support the community at Tijwinko. Thanks to God, I was able to make that change to another counselor, and since January of last year, she's been going to Mrs. Carol. She's been her counselor, and we've seen a great difference. She really is concerned about the students and would call me once in a while when my daughter was going through anxiety, and she would talk to her and would calm her down. And I don't want other students to go through the same bad experience as the bad counselor, as Mrs. Milky. It's not fair to other students at Tijwinko to have such a counselor that simply does not care about the well-being of the students of the school. I would not like to see another student get hurt by the lack of compassion and interest by the counselor.
Can you bring it forward so we can have it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we can read the rest of it. Sarah García, the call the rounds.
Buenas tardes, superintendente, miembros de la mesa directiva y invitados que están con nosotros. Mi nombre es Sarah Calderón, llevo siete años involucrada en las escuelas participando en el Hila y en clases para padres. Soy la mamá de Aaron Calderón, del octavo grado en la escuela T-Winkle. Estoy aquí como los demás padres de familia porque estamos muy molestos de enterarnos que la consejera Milky regresará a la escuela T-Winkle. El año pasado, mi hijo Aaron tuvo problemas en la clase de educación física y unos niños lo estaban molestando haciéndole bullying, diciéndole cosas sobre su apariencia y peso. Él fue con la consejera Milky y le dijo que le estaban molestando y ella le dijo que no podía cambiarlo de clase porque ella le había dicho no a otros estudiantes que pedían cambio de clases y no sería justo. Sin embargo, nunca le dijo a mi hijo que lo sentía por lo que estaba pasando, nunca le preguntó los nombres de los niños que lo estaban molestando y nunca le avisó a la directora de lo que estaba pasando. Esto es realmente inaceptable. La consejera simplemente ignoro a mi hijo e ignoro el problema y no lo ayudó. Mi hijo tuvo que soportar un día más de burlas y el bullying de estos niños hasta que hablé con la señora Diana, la coordinadora de la escuela, y ella rápidamente en ese mismo día habló con la directora y hablaron con Aaron y lo cambiaron de clases. Mi hijo, obviamente, dejó de tener confianza en la señora Milky como su consejera porque no le ayudó ni lo escuchó y como mamá, nunca, y yo como mamá nunca la he conocido y de hecho siempre pensé que la señora Diana era la consejera de la escuela. Ella entonces me explicó que solo había otra consejera, la señora Caro, y es cuando pedí el cambio de consejera. Así que estoy aquí porque es inaceptable que una consejera como la señora Milky no escuche a sus estudiantes cuando ellos están teniendo problemas tan serios como el bullying y es horrible que ni siquiera le hayan avisado a la directora, a su directora sobre el problema de mi hijo desde el año pasado. Varios padres de familia presentamos quejas con el distrito explicando que la consejera Milky no hacía nada por nuestros hijos y nuestros hijos tienen un problema y van llorando con ella. Ella les dice que simplemente ignoren el problema o los manda a la enfermería. Ella nunca está disponible después de las escuelas y nunca se comunica con nosotros. Nunca los vemos en las juntas de Hila o eventos de la escuela y no nos brinda algún apoyo a nosotros los padres. Ya varios padres hemos pedido el cambio con la señora Caro, la otra consejera, pero ella no puede sola con tantos casos de estudiantes. Tenemos a la señora Diana, nuestra coordinadora, pero ahora ella se nos va. Seguramente se nos va porque no se siente apoyada y ustedes no han hecho nada para sacar a la señora Milky de nuestra escuela. Ahora, ¿qué vamos a hacer sin el apoyo de la señora Diana? Ella siempre ha estado allí para apoyarnos, para traducirnos en nuestros idiomas, nos programa juntas con los maestros, con nuestros hijos, van bajos en sus calificaciones, nos apoya en todo y ahora se va porque ustedes no están brindando apoyo a la escuela T-Winkle. Esto es injusto. Con la señora Milky, nuestros hijos no se sienten cómodos y comentan que siempre se ve enojada y en las juntas siempre está en su teléfono e ignora nuestra presencia. Esto es injusto. ¿Qué sucederá si uno, qué sucedería si uno de nuestros hijos se llegara a suicidar porque la consejera de la escuela no lo escuchó, los ignoró? ¿Qué espera el distrito para hacer algo y remover a esta persona de la escuela T-Winkle? Van a sacarla hasta que pase una tragedia o uno de nuestros hijos se lastime? Ustedes saben que la adolescencia es una etapa muy difícil y es cuando más necesitan el apoyo emocional de sus consejeros y es injusto que no tengan nuestros hijos este apoyo por una mala consejera. Simplemente estamos pidiendo lo justo y es que nuestros hijos tengan una consejera que verdaderamente se interese en el bienestar de ellos y los apoye. Por favor, saquen a la señora Milky de la escuela T-Winkle, no la queremos y exigimos a una consejera que verdaderamente haga su trabajo.
Good afternoon, superintendent, members of the board. My name is Sarah Calderón. I've been involved in schools for seven years. I've been participating in INLAC, in many of the classes for parents as well. I'm the mother of Aaron Calderón. He's in eighth grade at T-Winkle. I'm also here with other parents because we are very upset when we found out that counselor Milky was coming back to T-Winkle. Last year, my son, Aaron, had problems at school during physical education and other children that were bothering him, bullying him, telling him things about his appearance, his weight. He went to his counselor, counselor Milky, and told her that he was being bothered by other students. She said that she could not change his classes because she had said no to other students that had requested those class changes and it would not be fair for other students. She never told my son that she was sorry by, you know, what was going on. She never asked for names of children that were bothering him and never told the principal what was going on. This is really unacceptable and the counselor simply ignored my son, ignored the problem and didn't help him. My son had to, had to go through this for one more day, this bullying of these children, until he went to Mrs. Diana, the coordinator at the school, and she quickly talked to the principal, spoke to Aaron and changed his classes. My son obviously stopped trusting Mrs. Milky, his counselor, because she did not help him at all.
Can you, can we have a copy, please? Thank you. Irma Mora.
Buenas tardes, superintendente y los de la mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Irma Mora y vengo aquí a lo mismo que mis mismas compañeras, que tenemos el mismo problema. El año pasado, tuve a mi hija en esa escuela. Mi hija iba muy baja de calificaciones y tuve una junta con todos sus maestros. Fue la única vez que vi a la consejera, a Milky. Aún, yo ya no la recuerdo. Yo le pregunté a mi hija, Nayeli, ¿ya habló contigo la consejera? Hija, échale ganas. No, mami, solo me llamó y me dijo, Nayeli, vas baja en las calificaciones. Con mala cara, mamá. ¿Cómo, hija? ¿Por qué te dijo eso? Yo no estoy pidiendo que te eduque, yo estoy pidiendo que te aconseje, que te ayude porque eso es papel de una consejera. Yo hablé con la directora y me dijo, la voy a pasar con la consejera. Llamé, nunca me contestó. Y le dije a la directora, ¿quién me puede ayudar? La directora me dijo, hay clases después de escuela. En eso me topé a Diana y le dije, oiga, usted me puede decir qué puedo hacer para que mi niña suba de calificaciones? Está muy mal. La consejera solo le dijo, estás muy mal. Y me preguntó, ¿quién es su niña? Digo, Nayeli Galvez. La señorita Diana agarró y dice, voy a hablar con su hija. Habló con ella y me dijo, mija, mamá habló conmigo, este, Diana. Digo, ¿y qué te dijo? Que hay clases después de escuela para ayudarme en la tarea. Gracias a ella, a la señorita Diana, mi hija subió porque ella le dio los recursos para que mi hija saliera adelante. Gracias a Dios, ahorita mi hija está en Early College, una buena escuela. ¿Por qué me voy enterando que la señorita Milky regresa a la escuela? Pero déjenme decirle antes, cuando hubo el open house de que los niños van a entrar, yo fui a ver y yo nunca vi a la señorita Milky. Vi a todos los maestros excepto a ella. ¿No es justo que ahora que ya van a regresar otros niños que tienen a lo mejor un gran futuro y esta señorita no les ayude, que les aconseje? No estamos pidiendo que no los eduquen. Estamos pidiendo que nos ayude a aconsejarle de lo que ellos quieren ser en la vida, para tener unos buenos ciudadanos aquí en Estados Unidos. Eso es lo que yo quiero. Nunca conocí bien bien a esa señora, solo una vez. Y eso no es justo para los futuros estudiantes que ya vienen. También me preocupó porque yo tengo un niño en sexto grado que va a ir a la misma escuela y para que se vuelva a topar con esa señorita, ¿no es justo? Pedimos un cambio, pedimos que la quiten de ahí, queremos que esa escuela tenga buenos, este, maestros, buenos consejeros principalmente porque de ahí es la base de nuestros hijos para que ellos sigan adelante y eso es lo que pedimos nosotros como padres. Tuvimos reuniones, yo vine, dejé una carta, me entrevistaron, nunca he tenido una respuesta hasta ahora, pero yo voy a seguir luchando para que esa señorita ya no esté en esa escuela porque yo tengo otro hijo y hay más niños, estos niños que ahorita acaban de entrar, los que están en octavo grado, los que vienen. ¿Qué va a ser de ellos cuando les toque esa consejera? Sí, sí, yo quiero un cambio porque tengo otros hijos y hay futuros estudiantes.
Superintendent and members of the board, my name is Irma Mora. I have the same problem. Last year, my daughter had very low grades at T-Winkle and there was no meetings with this counselor. The only time I saw her was when we had that meeting with all the teachers, that's where I met her. And I told Nayeli, has a counselor followed up with you? She said, she called me and she told me I have low grades and that's about it. She was very upset. I think their responsibility is to give advice, we're not asking for her to educate our children just to counsel them and help them in their, you know, in their path. We did speak to the principal and, you know, we tried to find help and the principal, after speaking to Diana, told us that there were classes after school that she could go to to bring up those grades. I told her, I talked to Diana, she offered, you know, those grades. She said she would talk to my daughter, she called my daughter or she met with her and told her that yes, she could be part of those classes. And thanks to her, my daughter's grades went up and she's now at Early College, which is a very good school. So I'm very afraid that this counselor, Ms. Milky, is returning to school, to this school. I can also add...
Thank you. Lastly, Carmen Ramirez.
Buenas tardes a president Ashley Anderson, a superintendent Dr. Smith y a todos los miembros. Mi nombre es Carmen Ramírez. Tengo más de 22 años siendo voluntaria de nuestro distrito escolar de Newport Mesa y nuestra comunidad y estoy, siento empatía con estos padres de familia que vienen a hablar porque es algo que me regresó hace muchos años donde mi hijo iba en el siete grado con unas clases muy avanzadas. Se graduó bilingüísticamente en 60 años que Costa Mesa no tenía un sello bilingüístico y una de las consejeras le dijo, no te preocupes por ir a una universidad, preocúpate por graduarte de la preparatoria porque vas a trabajar de yardero o en un McDonald's. So mi hijo fue...
So my name is Carmen Ramirez. Good evening, Superintendent Smith, members of the board. I've been a volunteer for about 22 years here in Newport Mesa and I have empathy for these parents. I had his son in seventh grade. He was taking advanced classes. He actually graduated with a bilingual seal, something that had not been done in 60 years here in Costa Mesa. And what his counselor told him was that, you know, don't worry about college, don't worry about university. You're, you know, worry about graduating high school because you're going to be working, doing yard work or at McDonald's.
So él se graduó de la escuela Cal State Fullerton con honores. Él ahora es un manager de la tienda Costco, estudió una carrera que él trabaja con business y yo no sabía cómo referirme a una consejera, no sabía. Esa consejera fue sustituida del distrito, este, gracias a Dios. Él ayudó a muchos estudiantes que no hablaban inglés cuando recién entraban a la Costa Mesa porque ustedes saben que esa escuela ha sido multicultural y ahora, escuchando a todos los padres que me han hablado y dicho esto, la verdad creo que nuestras consejeras tienen un lugar muy importante en nuestra escuela y en nuestro distrito.
So my son graduated from Cal State Fullerton with honors. He's currently a Costco manager. He has, he earned a business degree at Cal State Fullerton. And to be honest with you, at that time I didn't know how to talk to counselors, how to contact them or where they were located in the school. We know that counselors have a very important role, especially at Costa Mesa, which we know is multicultural. Many parents have called me about this situation and, you know, I can say that at that time there was a change in counselor and this new counselor really helps students, especially those newcomers that were coming into Costa Mesa.
Y creo que nuestras consejeras tienen que estar al nivel, no solamente académico, sino también emocional. Hoy encontré este flyer en mi escuela, Paularino, porque voy también a la escuela, Paularino, y dice, la salud mental es tan importante como la salud física. Solo porque no puedes verla no significa que no esté ahí. Busca ayuda en la escuela y el primerito que está es la consejera.
So we know that the counselor position is a very important position. They should be regarded in a high academic and emotional level. I found this at Paularino today that says, "Mental health is as important as physical health. Just because you can't see it, it doesn't mean it's not there." And the first person that you can call for help or one of the first people is the counselor.
Yo creo que es necesario que las escuchen a los padres y que ustedes los ayuden porque sé que hay un cambio y tienen que tener una investigación y tener unas consejeras que sientan empatía con cada estudiante que está ahí y si no hay los suficientes, pongan más, pongamos más y o que se refieran a maestros o a directores donde los niños se sientan a gusto.
So I think it's very important to listen to our parents. We need the help. There needs to be an investigation. Again, the counselor position is very important. That person needs to have empathy for all the students. If they're not, if there are no or not enough counselors, we need to bring more. We need to train teachers and even principals so that children feel comfortable with them.
Y yo sé que ustedes pueden hacer el cambio porque he estado aquí con ustedes por más de 22 años. He trabajado con muchas diferentes mesas directivas, he estado trabajando con diferentes superintendentes, he estado trabajando con diferentes consejeras y sé que ustedes pueden lograrlo y ustedes contratan gente capacitada para estos puestos.
So I know that you can make the change. I've been here 22 years. I have worked with many boards, I've worked with many superintendents, many counselors, so I know you can do it. I know that you hire the best.
Ustedes son los mejores en nuestro distrito y yo soy muy agradecida de estar aquí.
So you're the best in our district. I'm very grateful to be here.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you, Javier. Next, we have superintendent comments.
Was really happy and I think she had to leave, but one of our community members mentioned our expanded learning opportunity program, the benefit that provides over the summer. We do that throughout the year as well. We would love to do it longer. We worked our backsides off really to do what we did. It's so hard to find enough folks. There's a shortage of folks willing to do that work. You think about our folks that work on the daily. At the end of the day, they're ready to go home and be parents to their kids and so it's a statewide issue, the staffing shortage for expanded learning. But just know that we're committed to the programs. We're glad to hear that it worked so well for so many of you and to the staff and the audience that helped make that program a reality. Thank you, thank you, thank you, because I know they came to me and said, how the world are we going to keep doing this? And I said, I don't know, but we are. And they figured it out. And so the feedback is, it's appreciated, it makes a difference. So thank you for that. I did hear, and I really respected the way that the parent brought that forward, concerns about mandates on the horizon. I don't know where that... No sé dónde se ha sugerido. Solo compartiré que comunico regularmente con los oficiales estatales. Y puedo decirte que no he oído sobre ninguna de sus agendas, frentes de mi mente, demandas de vuelta para las escuelas. Creo que van a evitar nada así, especialmente cuando 2024 llegue por el camino. Eso es mi opinión. Pero puedo decirte con certeza, nadie ha mencionado que eso es incluso una sugerencia en la capital. Así que solo, no digo que estás equivocado, solo digo que con todas las recursos que tengo, no he oído sobre eso. Así que simplemente respiraré porque la salud mental es tan importante. Y entiendo el trauma asociado a lo que pasamos, todos nosotros, durante tres años. Así que, pero seguiré escuchando. Con respecto a los resultados, no sé dónde viene ese punto de datos, 42. Puedo decirte que en cada agenda traemos resultados de logro. Estamos transparentes sobre cómo estamos haciendo. Has oído que digo desde este día, vamos a hacer mejor porque nuestros hijos merecen más. Y cada grupo de empleados dice lo mismo, ¿verdad? Vamos a hacer más para estos estudiantes, vamos a hacer mejor. Seguiré trayendo eso, ponéndolo en frente de ustedes. Estamos emocionados por la dirección. Creo que escucharás algunas cosas esta noche que son emocionantes, que demuestran que cuando pones un foco en algo, te mejoras. Así que compartiremos eso. En cuanto a las engages privadas fuera de la alcaldía escolar, no tengo mucho que decir sobre eso. Excepto que creo que es importante que representemos correctamente cómo suceden las cosas. De lo contrario, es una representación intencional incorrecta, ¿verdad?, de hecho, que creo que es problemático por muchas razones. Nuestros testigos no prepararon slides para las right moms. Eso no era su contenido. Estaban allí para hablar de lo que el alcalde y miembros del board hacen. Eso es todo lo que comentaron. Así que esa otra sugerencia no está basada en hecho. En cuanto a la pregunta, ¿qué hacemos con nuestras prioridades del board, nuestra prioridad distrital realmente, para engañar más a nuestros constituents? Creo que es una gran pregunta y eso es lo que tenemos que mantener. Puedo decir que con Vanessa Galey y el trabajo que ha hecho en nuestro LCAP y el involucramiento que hemos tenido es exponencialmente mayor. Con los foros que hacemos en todas nuestras zonas para atraer a los padres. Y confía en mí, los padres que vienen tanto el LCAP como los foros no siempre están de acuerdo con lo que estamos haciendo. Y diría que más a menudo no lo son. Y ellos comparten eso. Con las encuestas que estamos haciendo, quiero decir, desde que he estado aquí, hemos hecho más y más y más de tratar de engañar a nuestros constituents. Y sabemos que tenemos que hacer mejor, pero ese es un compromiso de cada persona en este día y empleada en este distrito. También diría que nuestras reuniones del board son una representación de eso. Los amigos vienen todo el tiempo y son capaces de compartir lo que creen y lo que piensan, incluso si nos disagreeamos. Para aquellos de ustedes que son tan afortunados para asistir a reuniones del board regularmente, ven que nos desagradan a menudo y no están silenciados por su desacuerdo. Tienen el micrófono y lo respetan y lo escuchan. Ese es el proceso. Los amigos vinieron y dijeron a la junta del board recientemente, no deberían extender mi contrato. Mi esposa fue arruinada. Pero ese es el derecho de esa persona. Y con todo el respeto, respetamos eso. La gente viene aquí y nos dice cada mes lo que hacen y no están de acuerdo. Ese es el proceso, está funcionando. Solo porque nos desagraden o la junta desacuerda, no significa que no lo hayan oído, solo pueden desacuerdar. Así que vamos a seguir mejorando en eso. En cuanto a alguna reunión privada, no tengo comentarios sobre eso. El libro fue interesante porque esto se presenta, es un tema importante en el estado. No sé qué estaba hablando ese grupo, no estaba allí de nuevo. Así que solo puedo hablar de lo que estamos haciendo aquí. Y no estamos mirando eliminar ningún libro basado en temas. Eso no es nuestro interés. Queremos asegurarnos de que los libros sean adecuados en edad. Creemos que es una obligación que tenemos a nuestros estudiantes, a sus familias y al proceso educativo. Pero ciertamente, como fueron algunos de los ejemplos, eran grandes ejemplos, ciertamente no basados en tema. Y luego con nuestros padres que vinieron y tuvieron el coraje de dirigir a la junta en español. Es difícil hacerlo y están nerviosos. Gracias por estar aquí. Es a menudo frustrante porque no podemos, no podemos responder algunas de esas cosas, no podemos abordar la mayoría de esas cosas en público porque su personalidad importa. Pero puedo decir esto. Nuestra equipo toma ese input seriamente, cualquier input de los padres, seriamente. Cuando estamos hablando de la falta de acceso y de engagement, ese es el opuesto de lo que estamos comprometidos con proporcionar a nuestros estudiantes. Hablamos de estudiantes con algunos de los mayores necesidades, esos son los que necesitan más acceso y más oportunidad y más engagement. Así que estamos comprometidos con eso. Y si la gente espera información, o he oído algo sobre cerrar un ciclo de información. Solo quiero asegurarme de que mi personal está listo para llegar a los padres. Tenemos sus nombres. Y si te debemos algo de comunicación, si hay algo que podemos compartir, pondré en su calendario algún tiempo para que tengas una audiencia con ellos. Porque, de nuevo, no hay nada más importante que la voz de los defensores a favor de nuestros estudiantes, especialmente con los problemas que identificaste. Y eso es todo.
¿Tenemos algún material de entrada de la comunidad en agendas? Siguiente, tenemos un informe de logro sobre resultados de literatura temprana y pasos siguientes. La señora Shields y la señora Hernández.
Gracias. Queremos traer a doctor Laurie Hernandez y Kathleen Leary, que van a compartir algunos datos sobre literatura temprana. Y sabemos que cada mes hemos estado trayendo información y datos. Y este tema ha sido cubierto. Lo que vas a oír esta noche realmente es un resumen. Teníamos datos de progreso el año pasado. Esta es la primera vez que estamos presentando datos anuales. Y realmente queremos ponerlo en contexto de lo que esperarán en el año往后.
Así que, en primer lugar, nos gustaría comenzar por agradecer al board por no solo priorizar el trabajo que estamos haciendo en literatura temprana, sino también ayudar a apoyarlo. Y por tener una prioridad del board que claramente establece la expectativa de que vamos a hacer todo lo que podamos para apoyar a nuestros estudiantes en la literatura temprana. Eso es claro y lo agradecemos. En cuanto al por qué, ¿por qué es esto tan importante? Focar en la literatura temprana y la lectura en los primeros años de la escuela es vital porque establece el escenario para el viaje académico de un niño. Desarrollar habilidades de literatura fuertes en este etapa permite a los estudiantes comprender el tema en varios temas, fomenta las habilidades de pensamiento críticos y mejora su desarrollo cognitivo en general. La literatura temprana también aumenta la confianza, el engagement y una actitud positiva hacia el aprendizaje, todos los cuales contribuyen a una fundación educacional sólida. Así que, de nuevo, estamos emocionados de compartir con ustedes el trabajo que estamos muy enfocados en. Y tenemos dos directores excelentes, doctor Laurie Hernandez y director Kathleen Leary, para proporcionar algunas información realmente detallada en cuanto a la analisis de datos, lo que estamos haciendo con el currículo, lo que estamos haciendo para apoyar a nuestros maestros. Y todo esto muy enfocado en lo que sabemos que es mejor para los estudiantes, que es implementar las prácticas en el área de la ciencia de la lectura. Así que, sin más adelante.
Buenas noches, Presidente Anderson, miembros del board, Superintendente Smith, personal y invitados. Kathleen y yo estamos emocionadas de volver esta noche para compartir información sobre el trabajo que estamos haciendo para mejorar los resultados de literatura, empezando con nuestros jóvenes alumnos. ¿Cómo hago para hacer el slide avanzar? Oh, espera, ahí va. Bien. Así que, mejorar el logro académico sigue siendo nuestro enfoque en la educación elementaria. Y esta noche escucharán sobre nuestros esfuerzos continuos para fortalecer las prácticas de literatura temprana. Bien. Como recordatorio, cuando se refiere a la literatura temprana, estamos refiriendo a una compilación de habilidades requeridas para convertirse en lectores fluentes. Eso incluye escuchar, hablar, vocabulario, conocimiento fonémico y más. Trabajamos para un continuo de prácticas fundamentales que aseguran que todos los estudiantes de pre-primero grado hasta el tercer grado adquieren lo que es necesario para leer y escribir proficientemente. Todas estas habilidades son importantes y conectadas. Y es por eso que Kathleen y yo estamos trabajando duro para conectar nuestro trabajo. Así que el último año escolar compartimos con ustedes algunas de estas cosas que hicimos para fortalecer nuestras prácticas. Estamos orgullosos de nuestras fuertes y expandidas programas de pre-crianza y nuestros esfuerzos para usar prácticas de literatura basadas en evidencia en todos los grados. Nuestra equipo de literatura P3, que es un comité invertido en mejorar los resultados académicos en la literatura, se reunió varias veces y revisó evaluaciones y analizó el currículo. Como resultado de este comité, estamos realizando chequeos de progreso entre los métricos para el año escolar 23-24 para monitorear más a menudo a los estudiantes en nuestros mejores resultados. También implementamos lecciones de conocimiento fonémico de Hegarty en el distrito en 22-23. Y entrenamos a nuestros maestros de apoyo en tiempo completo en la ciencia de la lectura usando el currículo de letras. Así que Kathleen va a compartir algunas informaciones sobre algunos de los esfuerzos en pre-crianza.
Buenas noches. Como saben, en el aprendizaje temprano no estamos enseñando a los niños a leer, per se, pero estamos enseñándoles las habilidades que dan una base para el aprendizaje o éxito de lectura posterior. Hay mucho investigación allí. Y las cosas que concentramos en la literatura temprana son conocimiento de print, conocimiento fonológico, vocabulario oral y lengua y escritura, en particular, escribir su nombre. El panel de literatura temprana concluyó que aprender el alfabeto fue el indicador número uno de éxito de lectura en el futuro. Además, el conocimiento de letra y nombre tenía un impacto significativo en la adquisición de sonidos de letras. El conocimiento de la correspondencia de sonidos de letras es esencial en la lectura para leer una palabra. El aprendiz debe reconocer que las letras en la palabra se asocian con cada letra con un sonido. El conocimiento de la correspondencia de letras junto con el conocimiento fonológico son los pilares básicos de la aprendizaje de literatura. Antes de que los niños aprendan a leer en print, necesitan estar conscientes de los sonidos en las palabras. Así que comenzamos en el aprendizaje temprano con solo los sonidos que no son con rímenes y segmentación y aprendiendo el primer sonido de una palabra. Los niños deben entender que las palabras son formadas de sonidos individuales. Primero, comenzamos con los sonidos ambientales, ya saben, la diferencia entre un pájaro cantando o una campana de puerta. Y luego pasamos a los sonidos en las palabras. Una habilidad de la alfabetización y el conocimiento fonológico es un buen indicador de éxito de lectura posterior. También sabemos que buenos lectores tienen un vocabulario diverso. Y así, la lengua oral es también una base de la lengua escrita. Y el 14 de agosto y 15 de agosto teníamos más de 70 profesores de pre-primero grado y T-K que participaron en el desarrollo profesional en la literatura temprana y evaluaciones. Nos enfocamos principalmente en conocimiento de print y conocimiento fonológico. Y vamos a seguir en 1 de noviembre sobre vocabulario y escritura. Ahora, las evaluaciones que hacemos en la literatura temprana son un poco diferentes de las que usamos en los grados superiores. Usamos muchas evaluaciones informáticas y son una herramienta importante para los maestros en el aprendizaje temprano. permiten a los maestros recolectar información sobre lo que los niños saben y pueden hacer y luego usarla para guiar la instrucción y promover el aprendizaje de un niño. Para capturar una imagen precisa y completa del desarrollo de un niño, los maestros deberían usar evaluaciones sistemáticas y continuas. Muchas veces, las observaciones están embebidas en rutinas y actividades continuas típicas durante el día. Así que lo que tuvimos fueron videos de Michelle O'Neil, que conocen a nuestra coordinadora, haciendo evaluaciones, tal vez en un grupo pequeño, en un tiempo circulado o incluso durante el tiempo de juego cuando estaba en el drama y poder evaluar si un niño sabe contar y correspondencia uno a uno por cuenta de platos. Así que usamos evaluaciones y las usamos para comunicar con los padres, así como para guiar la instrucción.
Algo que estamos trabajando en el pre-crianza hasta el kindergarten es cómo realmente recolectamos y almacenamos y guardamos ese dato. Así que si un niño está en nuestro sistema en el preescolar, deberíamos ser capaces de ver esa trayectoria de cómo un niño está haciendo desde pre-primero grado hasta T-K hasta el kindergarten. Así que algo que Kathleen's equipo está trabajando es tomar algunas de estas evaluaciones de aprendizaje temprano y en realidad almacenarlas en algún lugar, en lugar de solo un registro informal que compartimos con los padres, pero realmente recolectarla para que el maestro del kindergarten esté realmente consciente de esas necesidades que el niño tiene. Y así, una vez que un niño entra en el kindergarten, en realidad hacemos más monitoreo formal y seguimos un cadiente. Así que continuamos a ver y monitorear todas esas habilidades de literatura usando cadientes. Y monitoreamos a los estudiantes en invierno, verano y primavera. Así que cuando mencioné la adición de evaluaciones de checkpoint entre los métricos, lo que significa es que si un niño en invierno ve por debajo del nivel que esperábamos, entonces haríamos una evaluación más profunda y en realidad tratar de diagnosticar qué exactamente instruccionalmente necesita ese niño. Y así, esta evaluación, el cadiente, medirá las habilidades esenciales. Y es crucial, como mencioné, para identificar a los estudiantes en riesgo que necesitan más apoyo intensivo o solo rehacer de algún habilidad específica. Y también nos puede decir cuáles son los estudiantes que están listos para leer independientemente. Así que a la otra lado, si un niño se calienta, eso significa que no necesitan más instrucción directa en estas habilidades fonicas particulares y están listos para realmente leer por sí mismos. Así que miramos los resultados en las tareas individuales dentro de la evaluación y también miramos el resultado total para ver tendencias y luego también para ver los datos de nivel estudiantil. Así que algunos detalles del kindergarten. En el fonismo, la segmentación de fonones es una habilidad crítica. Y en esa evaluación, probamos cómo los estudiantes pueden romper una palabra en su sonido. Así que si obtienen la palabra cat, ¿pueden identificar cat? Y en realidad, eso nos muestra si están realmente escuchando que las letras hacen, ya saben, los sonidos hacen palabras. Hemos visto un crecimiento de 17% en los dos años en esta medida. Pero lo más importante, estamos haciendo un trabajo más completo de asegurar que todos los niños sean monitoreados. Así que cuando entré en los datos y miré las comparaciones de dos años atrás, descubrí que en 2019 teníamos más de 1300 estudiantes de kindergarten, pero solo 934 tomaron la evaluación de fin de año. Y eso es por una variedad de razones, pero es solo que tal vez no hubo ojos realmente monitoreando para asegurar que todos los niños fueron monitoreados. Así que eso es solo, ya saben, menos del 70% de los niños tomó la evaluación. Así que cuando comparamos los años anteriores a ahora, no es exactamente arriba a arriba. Así que el año pasado teníamos 1,192 estudiantes en el kindergarten y evaluamos 1,165, que es alrededor del 98%. Así que eso es más en camino, ya saben, van a haber niños enfermos, niños que salen temprano al final del año, cosas así. Pero este es un beneficio de tener maestros de apoyo en tiempo completo. Así que están apoyando la evaluación para asegurar que todos los niños sean monitoreados. Están siguiendo, están asistiendo con las evaluaciones reales. En realidad, también les han proporcionado entrenamiento adicional sobre cómo administrar la evaluación para que haya mucha consistencia en cómo la evaluación es dada. Y así, estamos bastante orgullosos de eso. Pasando a la primera clase, el año pasado escucharon Kathleen y yo presentar midaño sobre nuestros significativos logros que tuvimos en la primera clase. Así que esos logros siguieron hasta el final del año. Vimos crecimiento en medidas individuales como la fluencia de las palabras de nónos y también en los resultados totales o los scores compositivos. Así que en la primavera de 2022 teníamos un crecimiento del 69% de los estudiantes que alcanzaron el objetivo para fin de primera clase. Ese es el promedio distrital. Para la fluencia de las palabras de nónos. Y en este año, este año pasado, en la primavera de 2023, llegamos al 76%. Así que eso significa que más estudiantes son capaces de usar los sonidos para atacar palabras que no conocen, que es una habilidad esencial para ellos en la lectura. Otra forma en que miramos los datos es por colectivo, que es mirar los mismos estudiantes a través del tiempo. Así que no va a ser la misma evaluación, pero está usando esta evaluación para medir si un niño o grupo de estudiantes están en camino. Así que este gráfico ilustra algunas escuelas que hicieron un crecimiento significativo en el nivel de los estudiantes. Así que Adams, Whittier y Pomona todos tuvieron un crecimiento de doble dígito cuando miramos a los estudiantes adquiriendo eficiencia durante dos años, desde el kindergarten hasta el final de primera clase. Y luego, finalmente, en la segunda clase usamos fluencia, en realidad, en la segunda clase y más allá, usamos fluencia, que es cuántas palabras correctas por minuto un estudiante puede leer, que es una medida importante, obviamente. Así que cuando un estudiante puede leer más de 70 a 80 palabras correctas por minuto, en general, están listos para leer independientemente y silenciosamente para comprensión. Antes de eso, realmente todavía están en esa fase de necesitar trabajo en el lado de la decodificación de las cosas. Así que vimos un crecimiento total de dos años como un distrito de 71% a 76% eficiente, lo que significa que el 76% de los estudiantes alcanzó o superó nuestro objetivo de fin de año en la segunda clase, que es 87 palabras correctas por minuto con un 97% de precisión. Eso significa que no solo están leyendo las palabras y cometiendo un montón de errores, también tienen que tener precisión en place. Así que ahora, si miramos los datos de una manera diferente, la tabla mira hacia atrás, así que el número inferior es mejor. Así que he señalado algunas escuelas que redujeron el número de estudiantes que están significativamente en riesgo. Y así, un número inferior es mejor cuando estamos mirando a los estudiantes en riesgo al final del año. Así que estos estudiantes son los que continuarán recibiendo instrucción en fonistas, conocimiento fonémico y fluencia cuando se muevan a la tercera clase para asegurar que tienen esos pilares. Así que no solo pasamos. En la tercera clase, los estudiantes se espera que lean independientemente. Pero cuando tenemos algunos estudiantes que todavía pueden ser flores tempranas, necesitan un paso extra, tenemos, tenemos un plan para trabajar para cumplir con esas necesidades para que adquieren esas habilidades en la tercera clase. Pero puedes ver una reducción realmente buena en el número de estudiantes en riesgo en varias de nuestras escuelas. Así que, ¿qué significa eso? Estamos emocionados por estos resultados, pero no estamos terminados. Así que planeamos continuar todas las acciones que pusimos en place este año y expandir especialmente en el aprendizaje de pre-primero grado y en fonistas K1. Así que una parte de nuestro plan que me gustaría señalar es que este año tenemos 36 maestros de clase, 14 maestros de apoyo y TOSAs, 22 profesores de pre-primero grado y todos los 22 de nuestros principales de la escuela, además de algunos directores y asistentes subs, que van a tomar un entrenamiento de ciencia de la lectura a través de letras. Así que, y esto fue por solicitud, nuestros maestros de tiempo completo. through letters. So and this was by request. Our full-time support teachers had it. We saw how beneficial it was, and now we have a whole, really, our whole department is focusing on it. And the teachers, actually, we, that was by request. So teachers started emailing me saying, I want this training too. I want this training too, because it's very, it's really like taking a college course. They're going to have to do some work on their own, but they actually wanted it. And that's, that's pretty good. That's really like, you know, a third of our primary grade teachers. So we're pretty proud of that. So what I mentioned was, we were going to implement a new phonics curriculum in K-1. So that's called Bridge to Reading, and it's a program from Hegarty, which is the same company that whose phonemic awareness lessons we used last year. So this program includes those phonemic awareness lessons and adds a phonics component. So this image we've showed you before, Scarborough's Rope, provides a framework for all the skills involved in becoming a skilled reader. So we are using this image with our teachers to help them understand how Bridge to Reading fits into our curriculum, into their reading instruction. So the bottom of the rope is what must be explicitly taught in the early grades, like students must be explicitly taught how to blend and segment words. So you can see at the bottom of the rope are all those word recognition skills, and we have that icon for Bridge to Reading. So we will be replacing the word work or word recognition section of wonders with Bridge to Reading for this school year. And so, it's important to remember that the top of the rope is also important. So we don't want to shift completely to only focusing on word recognition. We have to also pay attention to comprehension and language through read alouds and all kinds of other activities in the classroom. And so, wonders will still be used for comprehension, vocabulary, and all those other parts of literacy. So that, we feel like the the reading rope kind of illustrates where that fits. And we're excited to see how this more explicit and systematic approach to phonics benefits our students. So we will look forward to coming back to you with some results later in the year. At this time, Kathleen and I are happy to answer any questions from the board.
Trustee Weggant.
This is great. Thank you so much. I love to see these numbers. It's, it's really, it's just a really good testament that we're doing the right things. And then I love to hear that the teachers all, you know, third of the teachers and administrators signed up to take this extra training. That's awesome. I have a question on assessments before kindergarten if they don't attend a Newport Mesa preschool. So how do we do that? And how do we place, you know, the kids in the appropriate kindergarten class or know what they need when, before they come in?
We don't assess any children that don't attend either our pre-K or TK, but the kindergarten teachers, as they come in, will then do some assessments so they can help meet the students where they're at and then be able to have them grow in their literacy.
Okay. And is that assessment systematic wide for all kindergartens?
It's, the Akadience is what they would be for literacy.
Okay. And they do that all before they come into class?
Well, it would be within the first few weeks of school.
First few weeks. Okay. Got it. And then, also, I love that in, you say that grades three through six are going to be focusing on writing. And I think that's great because some of the feedback I've heard from parents is that, once the kids get to junior high, that writing jump is huge, and they would like to be better prepared in the grades three through six. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Trustee Crane.
A great report. I also love the positive energy. You can tell you're very passionate about this. So thank you. And of course, it's showing in the results. So first of all, I'm thrilled to see that you tested ninety-eight percent of our kids. That is absolutely amazing because it shows that less kids are falling through the cracks. So that's, that's wonderful. I did have a couple of questions. Is DIBELS the same as Akadience, or is it a rename, or is it a different assessment?
Yeah, it's the same assessment. It's just like a rebrand.
Just don't like the DIBELS part. Akadience sounds more sophisticated.
Yeah, just the company name. Yeah.
Okay, great. And then, Akadience versus S-Back, which test is more, I guess, more district-specific and more, more, I guess, intentional? Can you, can you tell us about the difference between S-Back and Akadience?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Akadience is, is measuring the essential early literacy skills that kids need to become competent readers. So we know, science tells us, they have to know letter sounds. They have to be able to blend and segment, right? So there's a progression of skills. That's what Akadience is measuring. S-Back is standards-based, based on the state standards of the grade level. It's measuring whether, really, whether they can apply what we're doing in in K-1, right? The whole purpose of us teaching them all these skills is so they can competently access text and read and write. It's all connected. So, so as far as how we use them, S-Back is a very summative end-of-year data point, which is valuable for us in a lot of ways, but doesn't exactly inform instruction. Akadience is done three times a year, plus we have the between the benchmark now. So we're actually using that to make decisions about what we're doing with kids the next day, where S-Back is like, you know, the autopsy that we certainly use to look at, how did we do, you know, as a system, how did we do as, as grade two teachers or grade three teachers? We can look back and say, which clusters of standards do we need to focus more on? Which, what did we miss? What did we get? We can look at individual students as they go into fourth grade, and we can say, you know, at the end of third grade, you hadn't mastered these particular clusters of standards. So they're used for different purposes, but certainly both valuable for us.
Okay. Because I know the state is, is leading the movement for earlier literacy, which is absolutely the key to foundational literacy. So I'm glad that we're on ahead of the curve, really. So thank you for all the work. It's exciting.
Trustee Weggant.
I have a question. As we were, you were talking about how you test Akadience three times a year, and then we get our report cards at the same time. Do, is it mandated by the teachers to, to provide that Akadience report to the teachers or to the parents with their report cards? Because I think that would be really useful if we don't.
Yes. So we, we do encourage our teachers to have these conversations with parents. What, what is useful about Akadience is it really is intended as a screener. You are either at risk or you're not at risk. Basically, are you on track? And then, our intent with those between the benchmark is any kid that is really not showing on track, we will be able to tell a parent, like, specifically, your child is at this stage working on segmenting words. Specifically, here's the letter sounds your child still has not mastered, that here's some things you can work on with them. And so, so our hope is that the between the benchmark becomes more that conversational tool, Akadience, but definitely is valuable because it tells you, you know, at risk or not at risk, which is its intent.
Yeah. It would be good to also, so we would get that kind of conversation, you know, beginning or during teacher conferences, but then it would be good to get that follow-up at the end of the last report card to see that progress so that parent can track it. I know it's probably on Aries, but, you know.
Yeah. One of the things, one of the things we've talked about is having some internal, some tools, some standardized tools that we provide teachers to help in that conversation with parents. So if teachers have, teachers are brilliant, so they've come up with their own ways to communicate with parents about data. But, you know, it's not as consistent, right? And I've seen some great tools with my own kids going through school and just stolen some things, you know, as a teacher. But I think that it would be great if we really borrowed, yeah. It would be great if we had some of these supports. So it's something that we've been, we've been thinking about is how do we support our teachers in actually talking, not, not turning into like alarmist by making people worry, but really saying, your child is on this, is here, and here's what, what we're doing next with them. Being really more specific in those conversations with parents, that is definitely one of our, one of our next steps. Yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And it's all available. So a lot of teachers print the, the screen. Illuminate is like a system where all the data go in there, and they can print a child's profile, which has like all their different assessments that they've taken, even back to prior years. And so, just teaching teachers how to more effectively use those tools, I think, is the next step, too.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Trustee Barto.
Hi. This looks so great. I'm really excited to see the progress. For not the earliest of early literacy students, we, in the past, a few schools did leveled learning intervention, I think.
LLI.
LLI. Are we still using that for grades like three through sixth?
No, that, that's not, not, that's not really aligned as much with the science of reading as we'd like it to be.
That was my question.
Yeah. So the best way to say that. We are, however, we have partnered with the dyslexia specialist team and all of us putting our heads together, and we are going to be training our support teachers at, in all grades in a phonics program that they can use with grades three to six. So we are rolling that out in September and training them in what to do when a child makes it to upper grade and they still have bottom-of-the-rope issues. How do we address that? We don't want to put them, we don't take them and put them in a kindergarten curriculum or a first-grade curriculum. What is an age-appropriate way to address those things? We do have SIPs across many of our schools, which is an age-appropriate way to address that. And so, we're adding to our bank of, of our toolkit in that way. But yeah, we're not, not, we're not supporting LLI as a district.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Crane.
I'm back. I have another question. Are you also finding that by, by virtue of pushing early literacy and all these assessments, that you're also detecting any sort of learning disability or behavior earlier so that we can address it earlier?
So that, in an ideal system, we would, and that's what we're trying to create, is a system where we have strong core instruction. Then we take, you know, it's normal for a certain percentage of kids to need a second pass at something, at learning to read. Then we get that second pass, then we see who's still not getting it. The number gets smaller. Then we really dig in with some really small group intensive intervention for children that might need another pass. And through that process, we're documenting that, the intervention and the progress, so that we eventually get to a point where we tease out, you know, things like learning disabilities and other, other things, like what's hindering? Sometimes we find out a kid needs glasses. Sometimes we find out there's something else going on. So it, so as you, as that number gets smaller and smaller, we get more specific in the, in how, how we work with that child to figure out why they're not learning. Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions? Okay, I'll ask some questions and make a comment. So I am really excited to see, I know, most of us have been concerned about learning loss during COVID times. And it's really exciting to see that we have kindergarten students that are coming in and are doing really well and are only one point off from where they, where students were in spring 2019. So thank you, and excellent job to all of our teachers and staff. Similarly, to sharing information and data, I think, common data out for parents, something like this, I think, would be helpful for parents to know what the trajectory is, what we're looking for, for every level. I think this is something that I know a lot of parents that I talk to don't know this progression. I happen to teach kindergarten. I know what phonemic awareness is. Most people have no idea. So I think not only having a chart like this, but then also doing perhaps like literacy nights and going through, here's what that means and here's what it looks like in practice would be really wonderful. And I think, too, as you were saying with the illuminate, you, the teachers have access to that. One of the things that I hear are parents saying that they don't know that their child is behind until the end of the year, which a lot of our data here is end of the year, right? And so, I think it could be helpful to either, like, once a quarter or much more often, print out that data for parents. So parents, as well as teachers, but parents have access to all of that. So they're really seeing, oh, this is the exact area Akadience is so specific. Like, they'll be able to see where their child is behind. And I think that would be really helpful in helping parents get their child caught up if need be with extra help. One of the things I was wondering is, I know we chose wonders because it works really well for dual programs. And so, I was wondering, as we're adding in the bridge reading components, does that have a dual piece to it? Because obviously, decoding and sight recognition are very important, and, you know, all of the students would need that information.
Yeah. So our dual immersion teachers did have the Hegarty phonemic awareness in Spanish. The phonics in Spanish hasn't been developed. This program is in its first year, but what they did develop is some of the ancillary tools, like the cards for the sounds that match the English ones. And so, we did, we are purchasing those for the dual program. And then, they will continue to use the Hegarty routines in Spanish. And I'm sure down the road, the company is going to do the full curriculum in Spanish, but phonics in Spanish is taught a little bit differently than English, so it's, it's still, it's hot off the press in English. So I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're getting pressure from districts to bring the Spanish. Yeah.
And then, what do we do for those three areas for Mandarin for word recognition?
They have, I'm sure that Laura Del Pash could provide more specific info, but they have, you know, a different way that reading is taught in Mandarin. And so, they have specific tools and curriculum to address that. Yeah.
And then, I know you were talking about the testing the students to see if they're at grade level or possibly behind or at risk. And I was just wondering what we are doing for students who need acceleration. I know there are a lot of students who spent a lot of time at home with some of their parents in the past few years. And so, some of our students are really far ahead, but not necessarily socially. And so, I've gotten a couple of questions actually this week about people saying, my kid is in TK, but they can read, or they're, they're much further along. And so, how are we communicating that? Like, I've had to say, we do small groups, we pull people aside, but how are we, as a district, going to communicate that information out?
I think we are in the process of really having clarity district-wide on what our literacy block should look like. And the, and what we trained our teachers in in the fall is really about how you spend your minutes in ELA and how that breaks up. And there should be a time in everyone's day, every day, for differentiation. So there's a time for everybody to be together, for those essential, we want to give everybody access to those skills. There should be a time for differentiation. And if we have kindergartners that are already reading, then they should be reading. They should be reading and writing and, and moving on or doing other kinds of explorative activities. And so, it's really, we're kind of, part of, part of this whole process that we've gone through to really kind of strengthen our tier one is going to naturally kind of strengthen for the rest. And, and so, we're, so, you know, I can't say that we've communicated with all parents what we do, but, but the more we help teachers understand exactly where their students are, the more we can help, our TOSSAs can go in and we can make recommendations for what kind of instructional activities would be more appropriate. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, we're not throwing out wonders, because wonders, it wasn't just chosen because of the dual, you know, components. It was chosen because it has really good, strong, complex text. And the types of activities kids do with those texts can be leveled up to kids that are above grade level. And there are extension activities in their teacher's edition. They have lesson plans for what to do with a small group of kids that might be working above level. But within that same theme, we don't want kids doing all sorts of whatever. If you're in a theme and in a text about something, well, then have them read other texts related to that topic and do activities and writing and all kinds of other things. So we're trying to kind of work toward teachers using those most powerful components of wonders, and one of those is the differentiation components.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I have one more question. I know we are doing a lot with expanded learning opportunities, and I was wondering if it would be possible, if some of those, or maybe schools that don't have as much of that great enrichment, if we can possibly train some of the staff that are doing homework help or working with students on some of these techniques? I know often they're, you know, college students, and they're folks who may not have exposure to something like this. But I think, I know I've mentioned the Literacy Project game that has all of the different components of every single piece of phonics education that you would need. And so, like, that's something that's fun. Kids raise their grades really quickly and like can literally like boost a grade above using that. So like, is it possible that we could train some of our expanded learning partners in, in some of what we're looking for in our focus?
I think that absolutely is where we're going this year in expanded learning, is looking at specifically about kind of that academic support, thinking about all types of ways that we can continue to build that now that we have such a solid core and, and experienced staff and strong leaders in there. And I know that Kathleen left us with such a great start to be looking at that, and Christie's coming in, going site to site, looking at all the assets and about how to build and spend that time. Of course, we are aware that a student has already been in school all day. So thinking about how to gamify, how to do other things that are reinforcing those skills, but don't feel like you're reinforcing those skills. Like, you know, another hour of school is not probably the answer. But are there ways to excite kids that they don't even know they're learning and they're learning? So that's kind of definitely where we're headed.
If I could just add, some of that is happening organically. We do have the full-time reading teachers, and they meet with our expanded learning staff at some of our sites. And so, you know, they know what students are in the expanded learning program, and so they work to say, you know, these are some of the things you can work with, you're, you know, and it may be a small group in the expanded learning. So I have seen that particularly at College Park and Whittier, but it's something that we thought was a great model and would love to expand.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Next, we do not have any. Next, for informational items, we do not have a legislative or budget Next, for informational items, we do not have a legislative or budget update, right?
Yeah, the only thing is, and I'll have one for next time because CSBA's Legislative Committee meets Friday, so I'll have more for the next meeting.
Wonderful.
And as we discussed, we're getting to the end of session and it's hot and heavy up in Sacramento, so we'll know more next month.
Can't wait.
All right. Sounds good. Next, we have our consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as listed.
Second. Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Ursulou. Roll call vote. Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Next, we have 18A, adopt resolution 030823 to establish the temporary inter-fund transfers of special or restricted fund monies. Mr. Trader.
As you're aware, we have a cash write period between July and December. This authorizes staff to make inter-fund transfers, temporary inter-fund transfers between funds that are enumerated in the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
No questions.
Do you have a motion? So moved?
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Wigan, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote. Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
And next, we have item 18B, adopt resolution 040823 urging the city of Costa Mesa to limit the number of cannabis dispensaries. Dr. Ursulou, would you like to discuss or introduce this item?
Sure. It had come to our attention that the Costa Mesa City Council was going to be discussing, exploring some more stringent regulations potentially on their cannabis storefronts. We're only one of three cities in the county that have cannabis storefronts. It's us, San Ana, and Stanton. And so I know that our city council, in looking to be the best partner to the residents of the city, are looking to kind of reopen their ordinance and explore if there's any opportunities. So several of us, you know, I know independently have kind of raised this in different ways, that it would be great to kind of write up something to show the city our support for their consideration of thinking through more, more tightly some of the regulations around the cannabis industry. So this is why I stayed up till midnight writing this. So I would love to hear feedback, thoughts, you know, any changes that anyone wants to make. But this was just a start to get the conversation going with, with our friends at the city. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Sorry, I thought I pressed.
Trustee Wigan?
Oh, trustee Bartow was first.
Trustee Bartow.
Thank you. I didn't press my button first, I apologize. I know you think through these sorts of things, so could you walk us through why you picked the thousand feet and the, I like a lot of these ideas. Yeah. Yeah, sure. So the cap is simply a result of the fact that there is no current cap at all in the city. So for their consideration, we'd like them to just have a game plan of like, what's, what's the end game? We have wait lists of dozens and dozens of potential owners, I guess, that want to open the dispensary. So, okay, what is the end game? Is there going to be some kind of, you know, cap? Over concentration, there's nothing written into the policy right now about, can we have four right next to each other? Is that okay? Is there going to be five next to each other or just two? So something around concentration, over concentration. And that was something that people had explored many years ago in different communities around over concentration of alcohol venues that you could purchase alcohol. So this is sort of just ensuring that this policy has something in there around concentration. And then the policy currently says that the dispensaries can't be within a thousand feet of a school, but then it allows them to be, I think, within 500, 600 feet of a student youth center or youth-serving location. So we thought, okay, typically you'd want, you know, they're all serving youth, the school's serving youth, the YMCA is serving the youth, Boys and Girls Club's serving youth. So why the distinction in the policy? Why not it be a thousand feet for, for any of those locations where youth come and go freely and walk by whatever is, you know, within a thousand feet of it? And then the last one is other, other communities have considered when you have a new tax revenue from a new source like cannabis, like, you know, any other kinds of new business that comes to the community, to have some plan for, you know, what is the community benefit of that new tax revenue? And is there a way to think about, okay, if we're going to have this kind of a business in our community, can some of those resources benefit our youth directly? Because we know that the other, there are some other funding sources, you know, cities have to support youth, some of the CDBG money, but that's been dwindling in, in recent years. So having this as a potential way to support our youth within the city, programming things like rocks, things like sports, whatever that, that they deem is, is most necessary, but to kind of have a dedicated part of that stream of this type of business to support our kids. So, yeah.
Trustee Wigan?
I just wanted to add, thank you for doing this, trustee Ursulou, and developing it. I think, you know, as a board, we've seen more behavioral issues attached to cannabis use and cannabis use on campus. And, you know, I think there was a, some research that came out in the last couple months about cannabis linked to depression. And, you know, we are seeing depression, anxiety and everything in our, on our campuses. So we have to spend, we're spending more money on our mental health supports for those students and, you know, limiting access for our students to those. You know, obviously they're not legal to buy those, but they can find it, you know, just the way that they find other things. So I think this is, this is a really strong way to have the, the city partner with us as a school district to really create healthy youth in our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okey dokey. I will make some comments on this. For me, I think following this a bit closely since it was a ballot measure and it was voted in, but there was a lot of vague language around, I think a lot of people thought there was going to be a green zone that was over north of Harbor and we weren't going to be seeing shops all along where students go to school. And so I think one of the things that I have a concern about is that there was no cap. That was one of the only actually city council meetings that I've spoken up as a trustee and said that I was concerned about that. I think for me, I'm, I'm really cognizant of the fact that we have in our city, we had so many sober living homes and we have so much homelessness. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to me personally that we would be expanding two of our most vulnerable populations. We would be expanding something that may impact them negatively. I think some of the discipline cases, as trustee Wigan was saying, I think we've seen an uptick in selling marijuana on campuses. We keep seeing vapes as something that comes forward, that students are selling them online with very sophisticated techniques at times. And so I was particularly, I went to one of the recent planning commission meetings and I was a bit alarmed to see that there, there were projected ideas of perhaps having three on one corner at Harbor and Adams. And there's already a large building there where I believe Pier One was. So I think, and it's right by the new OCC dorms, which are students who often can't afford rent in other places in our city and are often living by themselves for the first time and are some of our students that we, that are directly from our schools. And so I have a lot of concerns with, just right there. And I think it is a big academic concern for me. So I also appreciate you putting this resolution together. Thank you very much. I think the one thing I was thinking about possibly adding something in here about the zone, because I think one of the things we've heard, a few of us have been hearing from different parents or PTA folks about the fact they didn't know these were coming until they've started to get built now. So I think when people are at Triangle Square and they see nice guys, they think that it's like hamburgers and their kids are going to go in there and that's not what it is. And so I think it's just an interesting conversation that I'm glad that our board has made some, we're putting this together because we have some, some concerns. So I will have trustee Ursulou, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. Motion to approve, do I say the whole title?
Second. By trustee Ursulou, seconded by trustee Murphy. Roll call vote. Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have 19 informal reports. Dr. Smith.
Yeah, this isn't to disparage people that have different variables, different realities than we have. But I want to celebrate publicly, and it's been mentioned here, but I also want to celebrate our staff. There are a lot of places that didn't open on Monday. And again, they, they have their reasons and they're valid. We were able to monitor throughout the weekend our facilities. How, you ask? Because our employees worked all weekend. Up until almost 11 o'clock at night on Sunday, we have folks in our facilities checking every room and sending me pictures of the damage. We were also in communication with our city officials, with the police departments. They assured me that the city was as ready as it could be, that the roads were clear at, at that time at night. And we had provisions, if it got worse, to call off the day first thing in the morning. We made the decision based on the evidence and communications with our cities that it was safe to reopen. That didn't mean that it was just a flip a switch. No, they had a roving M and O team that showed up at five in the morning at our most troubled spots, cleared some tree branches, large ones, some classrooms that had ponds in them. They had not just dry them, but verify that those classrooms were safe to inhabit. All of that happened before school started. Now, in a couple of instances, only a couple of minutes before the bell rang and school started. But what a great Herculean effort by our folks, certainly in the classified ranks of setting them up. As well, our teachers showed up. Our teachers showed up and in these classrooms where it wasn't ideal, where they would have loved to have done whatever they do before class starts, meditate, pray, whatever, they, they had to have blow dryers in the background, drying the carpets. And when I walked through each of these classrooms that day as a priority to see where our worst circumstances were in every classroom, students were engaged and learning because they had great teachers and support staff teaching them. Our principals showed up, they were there over the weekend as well, they were there for the start of school, right? We had great attendance. And in those classrooms, kids were learning and they were thriving and they were getting support that they otherwise wouldn't have gotten if we called that day off, right? I'm not patting myself, and no offense to the board, on the back here, but I'm going to pat all of you out there that represent our team on the back because where others couldn't, we did. And in every instance, those kids thrived. So thank you for, for doing that for us. Some community events that we've had that just demonstrate how amazing this community is, got to attend Love Costa Mesa and, and all these folks coming together and saying, how do we demonstrate our love for our schools by serving? There's no greater demonstration of love than service. And that's the question, how do we better serve our schools? We talked about Cafe and some of the things that are happening. Just, just another inspiring example of this community and why we're going to be the best school district in the state of California. That's the reason. Similarly, we had our back to school event, so you may not know about, where we served, you know, 3,000 kids, 10,000 people were there. We gave away almost 4,500 backpacks full of supplies, 3,500, you know, pairs of shoes and socks, and then boxes of food. It was amazing. Yet again, just our team coming together, doing that work, again, the community coming together. And then just so you know, our, our folks are so dedicated, not just getting classrooms ready, but getting their minds and their professions ready for the first day of school. And our folks came back for professional development pre-K-12. And they had myriad things that they went through, writing from beginning and beyond at the elementary level, early literacy assessments, which you saw, social studies at the secondary level, AI and ChatGPT. If you don't know what it is, ask one of your kids. We had responding to student thinking at the secondary level and specific curricular trainings around those content areas. And then at all areas, schoology, which has been an issue, if you know, you know. And then safety protocols, right, for every employee in the district. That's the investment of the paid professionals in this district and I'm honored to work with them and I admire every day that they show up for our kids.
We'll start in the middle. Trustee Pearson.
Today was a great day. I got to visit with, with Carol Crane. We went to about eight school sites, which I don't think we saw one leaf on the ground. I mean, that was the first thing we noticed was how beautiful the campuses were. They didn't just work through the weekend, they, they were working all summer long to get those campuses as beautiful as they were. We were pleasantly surprised that we had to ring bells to get into a lot of the schools. So our security protocols are coming along and getting into place, which was wonderful. We saw the kids learning, we saw the smiles on everybody's faces and it was just a really feel-good day. So thank you. Thank you for keeping our schools open. Thank you to our staff, to our teachers and to the parents that trust us with their kids. It was fantastic.
Trustee Murphy?
So yes, for sure, it was a great opening day and thank you to everyone who made that happen. We really appreciate it, as you know. Thank you to Jeff and his team for fixing up the Costa Mesa football team room. It looks way better than it did at the beginning of the summer. And so I know that that took a lot of hard work and you had to get scrambling for, to, you know, to fix some things that some, some folks might not have done quite right. So I appreciate you working so hard to make that right for our football players and our, and our coaches over at Costa Mesa. I have heard that they are very happy. That could change, but I've heard as of right now, they are very happy. So thank you. And I would just say, you know, that all of my colleagues up here know, so I will usually default to humor in most situations, but to, to just say, I am very proud of our parental rights and responsibilities policy. I actually think it was well-written, it was well-informed, it's legal, which I think is extremely important. And being a parent on the board and working with parents on the board, I hope our community knows how important we take parents' rights and, and parents' involvement in your students' education and our students' education. So there is no dismissal, dismissal of that, there is no discounting that, there is, I'm not being flippant about that in any way, shape or form. But from this perspective, I will say, what is hard for me is to see students out in the audience when certain things are being said up that podium about them and seeing the looks on their face. And it is not a happy look. It is a look of sadness and fear. And as a parent, that's not acceptable to me. So you will get a reaction out of me when I feel like you might be crossing the line and going after a very vulnerable population that deserves our support and our kindness and our respect. And as if a 12-year-old is asking their counselor that some information be kept confidential, I believe as adults, as parents, that they deserve the right to have that information be kept confidential. Not to discount parents, not to disqualify parents, not to pull parents out of the process, but to allow that child who is legally able at age 12 to say but to allow that child who is legally able at age 12 to say that they want that information to be kept confidential, to have their confidences kept, because we will serve them better that way. They will feel safer that way. They will be secure that way. That is what I believe our job is. We can continue to have our conversations about parental rights and responsibilities. And I will happily have those with you because I know how much, how much you value those conversations, how much you value, how much we all value parents' input in our children's education. But I, I will always fall out of line in support of our most vulnerable. So that's all I have to say about this.
Thank you. Trustee Bartow.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to every single employee for the wonderful opening. I had four kids go to school at three different levels. There was a lot of anxiety because it was new schools in sixth grade and every single one came home saying that they had a wonderful day. Other kids who showed up at my house after school said they had a wonderful day. So based on my sample size of about 10, it was a very successful day, all around at multiple schools. So thank you very much.
That sounds super valid. So just kidding, because I'm sure someone will think that was rude somewhere. In an effort to. In an effort to self-police, as I've heard, I'm never out in the community. So I thought I'd share all the things I've gone to this month. We went to the city liaison meeting, was excellent, working with our partners at the city, went to the school staff, what was it, like a barbecue picnic thing situation at Estancia with all of our wonderful staff. And a shout out to RJ, who's my neighbor, who's in the, the maintenance department. I know he's one of the people that was running around doing a lot of stuff to make sure the schools get open on time. In the past week, I've had really great meetings with, from my job, job, the one that pays me money, because it's not this. From my job, job, I have the great, you know, pleasure of working with so many nonprofits in this county that do so many great things. And so in the past week, I met with Groundswell. They do great restorative justice work. And I get the privilege of connecting all of them to the people that actually do the work, which is not us, to Socorro and, and Kerry and team. But Groundswell does restorative justice work and they're, you know, interested in, in finding ways to work with the district. I talked to Girls Inc., who, you know, those of you that know Girls Inc., they're a phenomenal organization. They were born here in Costa Mesa, but they've since moved offices. And during the pandemic, they kind of have disengaged a little bit from our district, but they really want to come home to Newport Mesa and do more programming for our girls around social, emotional strengthening and things like that. And they're excited to talk to Socorro. I'm so sorry, Socorro, there's like a list that's coming your way. Cambodian Family does a lot of engagement work with youth around teaching them about their rights and advocacy. And they also want to talk to you. And last but not least, Resilience OC also does some advocacy work with youth and they, they really are excited to mobilize the, the youth in Costa Mesa and let them know their rights and how to speak up and how to engage, you know, respectfully and meaningfully in these kind of public dialogues. So, you know, while I was doing nothing and not talking to anyone, those were some of the things that, that happened magically. And I'd like to also just give my phone number because I know that some people are really wanting to talk to me. So again, my number's 949-690-0019. It's on the website. It's on my Instagram. It's everywhere I am. You can find me. So anyone that wants to talk to me, you know, I'm an open door and next.
Oh, wait, wait. And feel free to give them my number too.
I'll share.
Thank you. Trustee Crane.
First, I wanted to give a shout out to Victor Jimenez in the front row there, who is our, one of our new student board members who stayed this whole time. He's actually not, this was an optional meeting and there he is. So thank you. That's a great start. And we, and on that subject, we just had on the 15th, a student board, new student board member orientation. That was an hour long and it was wonderful to see the new class of student board representatives from our campuses. And I wanted to thank trustee Anderson and, and Dr. Torres for being there and helping out in the orientation. And they will be reporting to, in their first meeting next in September. So we're going to have, we're going to host a family dinner so that the families can also be invited to see what their students will be doing on Tuesday nights, every third Tuesday of, you know, the year. So that was very exciting. And thank you, Victor, for being here, early college high school representative. I also wanted to mention the passing on July 21st of an amazing woman, Barbara Harrington, after a short illness. Barbara had served as a teacher and principal at various district sites, including Harborview, Adams and Kaiser. And she also was most, most recently a member of the Newport Mesa School Foundation, which is when I had the pleasure and the honor and the privilege of working with her. She had a huge heart. She bled Newport Mesa and she loved students. So Barbara, rest in peace. Heaven just got an upgrade. All right. So very busy. A lot of welcome back events I attended, including the East Bluff Pancake Breakfast by the, sponsored by the Edads, Anderson Big Friday on last Friday, sponsored by the PTA and the school. We went to the district staff luncheon. I, I was told that there were a couple of thousand who attended, which is wonderful, actually 1,500 or so. Great showing. TK Burgers was, was serving their yummy burgers. And looking, we went to the Back Bay Cafe, that's sponsored by Love Costa Mesa and Back Bay High School. And we are getting ready for our first tailgate party for our first home game for CDM against Downey. So we will be there. Trustee Pearson and I in our neon t-shirts and anyone else is welcome to come and join us. And that's it. I do definitely want to thank all of our staff in making our first day of school seem seamless. There's a lot of work behind the scenes. So thank you. And then a great launch to the year to everyone, students, families, community, teachers, staff and board as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wagon?
Yeah, I want to, the first day of school went well. It, it was amazing. I got a lot of texts and everything thanking us for opening. I think a couple of, of, of people that I knew were the ones that, that reached out and said thanked us for having the public schools open and when the private schools weren't. And, and they were really impressed. And it was hashtag should have gone private or should have gone public. Excuse me. Woo, got that one wrong. It's been a long day. Hashtag should have gone public. So, public schools are great. No, they are, but thank you. I also, so that was, that, that was wonderful. But I wanted to say, the, the biggest thing that I've heard from the community is how excited they are for the new administrators that are at their schools. I think it gave everyone a new fresh, fresh perspective on their school sites. I think we did a good job of, of finding the right fits for those communities as well. So thank you for doing that. I, I have had more people come up to me and talk about how their principals reached out to them before the start of school, as well as teachers who have reached out to their stu, their students or their, their parents after the first day of school and give them a personal phone call and said, hey, great day, you know, we had a good time. And just that constant communication from the principals and the teachers to the families, I think is going to go so far with our, our students' education and having a start of a great year. So thank you for that. And business meeting, went to a Coastline ROP meeting. It was great to hear all of the, the, the classes that Coastline ROP does offer in the summer. We had one this summer and they, they did a report on, on those classes and they're great. Hopefully we can do more next summer. But that's off and running and, and talking about potentially having a supply chain ROP class through our group. And it's just, it's, ROP is just a, it's a, it's an amazing growing field. And I think we've got some great people involved at Coastline ROP.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. You can help lead the supply chain sessions. I just wanted to add one comment on our resolution. Our resolution, our seven hour resolution bipartisan support, our recommendations for the city council and for the planning commission, we are not, we didn't put in specific numbers. We didn't over direct. That's not our intention, but we just wanted to give our support to making a change. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I was able to attend on Friday, the meet and greet at Wilson Elementary. It was a very big delight to see their new principal and their two PTA leaders who are really fired up this year. They are, they were excited that Northgate is coming to town and excited to partner with them particularly. But it was just really lovely to see everyone from their amazing head, Custodia and Erica, to all of the parents that were around. It was just a really lovely way to get all of the families on campus before the school year started. I was also able to attend the Back Bay Cafe, which was a really great time of hearing from Dr. Bauermeister about what the needs are and how the community can partner at Back Bay. One of the things that came up, for the first time, we had Nate Robbins from the city of Costa Mesa there. And he is, I call him like the oracle of practical needs, which Dr. Bauermeister has a, a section of all the basic needs that students may need. And so the partnership, I think, with the city and our facilitators and getting that really dialed in. So the facilitators have a full list and they know what resources to access rather than spending time having to find those and being able to spend more time directly serving our parents, I think is going to be a huge win. And then lastly, some of you got to see our welcome back video. And we are really excited this year to really be trying to focus on Coast, Newport Mesa unified, that we are one district. We are very different in our cities. We are very different in a lot of components of our school community. But unity does not mean that you have to be the same. It does not mean that you have to agree on everything, but it means that you can get along and you can be respectful and that you can really value what some of those differences are. And so I just wanted to thank all of you for an amazing first week of school. And we are looking forward to great things this year. So thank you. And we are going to adjourn the meeting at 8:22.